Your September meeting, my answer, District Two, Board of Trustees, now to order. I would like to welcome you to the meeting. Please be advised that this meeting will entail a take feel of the business of the board, as it relates to our district. As members of the aldermen's, you are not allowed to discuss further than any part of the meeting. I ask that you respect and hold out on board's.
I would like to give you the word of the United States of America. It is in our honor, from the highest standards, one nation, we are individual, liberty, justice for all.
I salute the flag of South Carolina and pledge to the county's church with love, loyalty, and faith. Before we begin our meeting, if this were I, nor if it was Mrs. Martin, she would not have been here. Tonight, I would like to recognize somebody who has earned much respect over the years. Having personally worked with him over time, there is much that I respect and appreciate about him. I appreciate, first of all, that he loves this district. And secondly, I appreciate that no matter what the task he's given, he's going to work hard, do his best, and accomplish the tasks that have been placed before him. Mr. McCall was known district point of contact at the end of April. Along with the many responsibilities that this assignment entail, it also came with the responsibility of managing and leading a district team through a two-hundred-page state document detailing the start of this school year. A very different school year. So, the board at this time would like to publicly thank you for leading our district, for the kindness and graciousness that you always extend to everyone, and for always working so hard to ensure that our district is continuously moving forward. So, on behalf of the board, we would like to present this plaque to you, Mr. McCall, to show our gratitude and appreciation to you for your job well done. This plaque reads, "Presenting to Mr. Leslie McCall in recognition and appreciation for your dedicated service and leadership as point of contact for Anderson School District Two from April the twenty-fourth to July the thirty-first, 2020. Presented to you on this day, September the fourteenth, by the Anderson School Board of Trustees. Thank you for everything you've done." Our next item is the adoption of the existing, if you like, your motion of the election.
I have a question about the, since I wasn't allowed to speak tonight on a political basis. We all did agree, when I did speak about it, that we would follow up on the policy P D E, which has our board voted, or, or attorney pick present. Are we going to vote to have an attorney present? There should be, that's not. I just don't understand why we keep having an attorney present every meeting.
I would like to make one comment. Um, I think you were absent for a couple of meetings, or did you hear about all?
Oh, no problem.
Okay. At which time, I remember specifically, Mr. Andrews, you were here. We did talk about having Mr. Childs present at our board meetings, and we did agree, as board, those that are present, and those that, I don't know if you heard it, that were in form or not, but we did agree, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, that, that we would extend an invitation to Mr. Childs to be here, as long as we felt like that we needed for him to be here. There's some important legal business that needs to be discussed tonight in executive session, and his presence is needed for that. So, am I correct in saying that we all agreed that he would need to be here as we needed for him to be here, and that that was agreeable by all, did we? Is it clear?
Madam Chair, may I just respond, and Mr. President, Mr. President, when we had a meeting to set the agenda, it actually was my recommendation to the board, that we have Mr. Childs here for the reasons that we'll be talking about in the first session. So, I would take full responsibility for this meeting.
But are, per the policy, are we supposed to vote in the board? Does it mean that they have to pay their money on an attorney?
Well, you select the attorney, but based on, I'm going strictly by memory right now, but based on what I understand the policy, it says that any board member who won't show up, the superintendent can request that the attorney be present in the event of need, not our, that's right, what it stands for. And I felt that that would be acting like we truly needed to have Mr. Childs here.
But I don't have a problem, and we represent all the different taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
And they're the ones putting the vote, and I think we ought to have the vote between the entire board. If we're going to keep having an attorney present.
Well, and what, oh, sorry.
No, no, I, yeah.
Now, what I was going to say, and that's, that's a reasonable request from the standpoint, I agree, that, you know, you know, I, I don't know, and I'm sorry, but I'm ignorant on this piece of it, that Mr. Childs, he has been coming quite frequently, just due to the situation. But I don't know, I don't think there's ever been a vote that says we will have an attorney present at every meeting, and you're exactly right, if it's at, to that point, we would need to bring that to board one. And I stand to be correct, but that's.
And so, I'm asking, if we're going to vote that he can keep coming every single week? I mean, we don't receive no emails from Mr. Childs, and we don't, I mean, the three of us, I'm, I'm just speaking, I know I don't. So, you know, we don't have votes on him. So, if he represents the entire board, we ought to get some information on that.
And he is, and he is representing the entire board, but you're exactly right, I understand that. And if that, that be the case, and like I said, I, I take responsibility for denying, but at the same time, if he's going to be, want to retain us at every meeting, that would definitely come to the board of trustees.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Madam Chair, any interruptions?
No, no, you're fine. Um, is there a motion being that we're expecting a gentleman to act on this agenda somewhere? It's all in place with this resume. I would have to, I should have, I should have. Um, if one of you has quite enough to leave the, um, August meeting, I would change it. Do I have a motion to approve it then? Something, um, please, sir. Thank you. I would like to review the line. Right, this is me. Next week, uh, we can send a agenda, and I will turn this card of the agenda meeting over to you.
Um, our, um, reviews through the end of August are three million dollars. We received an F A and a B A, um, but nothing else is there. We're seeing a little bit of, um, payroll taxes, but other than that, um, it's basically just state law coming through. Um, page three shows our expenses. We've, um, total expenses through the end of August are three point five million, or eleven point two percent of the budget. And then, all the detail behind that. Um, page fifteen shows our cash available at the end of August. Um, the end of August, we have seven point four million, almost seven point five million in our various bank accounts. Um, you can see the detail for account on the next two pages. And then, um, page eighteen shows, um, the graph of our cash compared to the last two fiscal years, and the red line is, um, this year. So, we are right in line with where we were this time last year. Um, this next graph shows our purchase orders for the month of August.
Okay. Send that to me so I can share the question.
I will. Yes, sir, I will.
There's another thing, I understand that all those were returned, insurance check, is I'll uncash?
Yes, we ordered that check.
I would like to enter into the minutes, that he did return that, he did not, that it was returned to the minister. So, just make, I will enter that in the minutes.
I will add on here, you need to, yes, we're done. I'm sorry, I was, I was.
Hi, I'll be at first.
Yes, good, okay, yeah.
We got some sound issues on, we can pause just a minute, make a sound fix, if we, for some reason, nothing's going out.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can, can you hear? This is a test, can you hear?
Yeah, she can hear now.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda somewhere? Thank you, is there seven?
Seven.
Thank you. Does in favor, please raise your hand. The consent agenda is being approved. Um, our next item is the superintendent's report, and I'm going to turn your other motions to Andrew.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. With everyone's permission, I'm just pulling my mask off, sensing my ear. I've got to be sure to speak loud enough, uh, so that it can be received. Uh, we'll also, Mustache, we will, uh, we will send that request to all the board members, per your request.
I, I just meant, uh, everybody.
Oh, I knew you did, I just want to be sure she knew that. Uh, thank y'all very much, uh, I have the next two items on the agenda. Uh, the first being the transition update two. If you recall at the last meeting, I shared that I would be giving an update and compiling a lot of information, uh, to share with you. I'm not going to insult you about going through all of this and reading all this, I just want to hit some highlights and some generalizations, and of course, answer any questions that you may have. The information that's shared in this document is a compilation of responses shared with the interim superintendent during individual conferences. The information received is a gateway to an understanding of our individual and collective strengths, as well as the challenges we encounter moving forward as a district. Now, listed below are the discussion items and questions posed for our team, followed by the general overview of responses, and I compiled the responses and put them in this form here. Roman numeral one, uh, individual conferences, questions, and thoughts. Now, the first two, tell me about yourself, what are your professional goals? That really is between the superintendent and the person that met with me. And what I do is, as interim superintendent, I take that information and share it, uh, put it in their folder for them. It's not a personnel folder, it's just a general folder that I keep, so that we, we know what their career goals are, uh, and we'll be able to transition that over as they move through their career to be able to win opportunities to rise. We are aware of the areas that they wish to, to grow. And then, of course, the questions that I ask every, every individual in all, what are the strengths of Anderson School District Two? What are the areas of improvement for Anderson School District Two? What are the strengths of your department or school? What are the strengths, uh, excuse me, what are the areas of need improvement of your department or school? And then, the last three, that's compiled into one, what are your expectations of the superintendent? What are your expectations of the interim superintendent? And what can I do as interim superintendent to support you? Now, Roman numeral two, the transition conferences, that's just a listing of the routines and individuals that I met with, and I've estimated that to be between, and this is counting the teams and not individually, but a team is one, just one, counted as one, between fifty-five and sixty teams and individuals throughout, and it was well worth every, every moment that I spent. Uh, it was amazing. Uh, the, the candor that they spoke with me, it truly was, was very refreshing and very warm to feel that I was being received and trusted in such a way, because they really did, did not know me. Now, the next page, uh, is the questionnaire, the strengths, and again, I'm not going to read all these, but there is, there is one theme that comes back through all of this, and I'll go ahead and say it right up front, is that we have employees, we have a board of education, we have administrators, regardless of our differences, that truly care and want to put our children first. It's, it's self-evident across the board, and I was new coming in. So, for me, uh, it was all fresh, I had no agenda, other than just to hear what they would have to say. And I promised them that what they said to me would be in the confidence that they could sign, they could write their name on it, because they filled a lot of this out. They could write, they could sign their name, but regardless, I would never use their name. And I kept the rough draft of it, but that was just to be sure that I had it, I'm getting ready to. Once we finish this meeting, I will probably shred all of that. I just wanted to, just in case there was any question about anything with reference to that. But you see, teachers, firm, children first and focus, families, community support, teamwork relationships, collaborations of principals, dedicated staff and leadership, resiliency, uh, flexible, uh, and, and the list goes on. And then, when you look at the area of needs of improvement, and this helps, by the way, too, and I didn't make, this helps me with, with my goals, and when I say mine, they're the district's, but my goal's to present to you. It gave me a somewhat of a roadmap. Now, the first one there is curriculum and instruction. And I made that choice to put that there, because that's why we're here. I mean, that's, that's why we do, everything we do is educating the children, and educators, you know that. Curriculum and instruction, what are the needs of improvement? We need unified communication, and let me say, any of these is not directed at any individual or collective group, not in I S. I just said, just generally, what do we need to do? You know, unified communication, aligning programs across the district, uh, strong, effective district-wide curriculum, uh, expectations, uh, high expectations of our leadership team, uh, achievement, uh, writing being a focus, vertical planning, uh, between the schools and horizontal between the schools. And then, other areas, uh, internal and external communication. So, a lot, some of the positives come back a little bit as, as a challenge as well, but that's normal. I know I'm talking probably too loud, but I'm doing it on purpose so that people can hear, that are in, okay. Um, rebuild trust between our community and district, public relations. Uh, we, and Mr. McCall and I have talked about this, we really need to really strive to have more public information coming out, uh, at every opportunity. And it's easy to get caught up in, just assuming everyone knows what we're doing, but the good things we're doing, but in fact, sometimes they don't. Uh, and that's on us, that's on the superintendent. Uh, district messages, speaking as one voice, focus on our mission, one person said, I'll never forget it. He, he asked me the question, he said, why are we here? And I was getting ready to answer, hoping it would be the right answer, but before I could, he said, we're here to educate the children. And thank goodness, that's what I was going to say. But I thought that was very, very telling. Uh, trustees and superintendent relationship, and I think that was, that's not talking about anything in the past, I think that was just talking in general, because I said, when you say that, you mean like with me, with, and he said, yes. That, that, that there's a relationship, uh, that's a mutual respect, uh, and I understood that. Department strength, they're getting students first, collaboration, team players, care and support of one another, open communication. Department areas of needs for improvement, curriculum and instruction, uh, expectations district-wide. I, I heard that loud and clear, and that's, that's okay, that's, you know. Clearly communicate the district vision. Uh, realignment of job responsibilities, and that is one of our, one of our goals for this year, and I'll share that shortly. Strengths of our schools, culture, teachers, high expectations of themselves, coachable, support staff, family atmosphere, team collaboration, student-centered, saying all the right things, and I, and I knew that, that this was genuine. Uh, and I won't read them all, thrive for excellence, professional learning, community practices, great leadership at the school levels. And then, in terms of need for improvement, student achievement. And we've all agreed that we've, we've got a little bit, had a little bit of a dip, and we want, you know, that's okay, that's, that's, that's perfectly fine. We just have to acknowledge that and move, move forward. And our principals are aware of that, and they've made that a part of their P D E plans this year. Uh, rigor relevance in, with, of instruction, uh, testing data used for improvement, focus on the test results, uh, streamlined technology, uh, community involvement and relationships, you know, that was one that was a very positive, and it also showed that at some of the schools, they felt like that we need to do a better job with that, or they did at their particular school with that. And then, the last one on this is the expectations of the superintendent, or interim superintendent, and I told you, I compiled all this into one. Basically, uh, lead, be the instructional leader is the number one focus. Uh, have a vision, effectively communicate, uh, be visible and available, but the effective communication there too is meaning, uh, with the internal and external public. Uh, respond to issues, support our decisions, and a couple made the point, when defensible, you know, when defensible, I understand that. Uh, rebuild relationship with trustees and schools, uh, overall, and, and that's an ongoing. I've been a superintendent a long time, and I can tell you, that is always a challenge in any community, uh, especially if, if you and I have a disagreement, you know, and, and we will at some point in time, and that's perfectly okay, but I have to remember who my boss is and respect that, uh, and, and you remember that you have the one employee, which is me, uh, and we work through that together, and we can agree to disagree. And I'm sure that we will be able to do that during my tenure here. Guide and support us during these unusual times, that's going to be the number one goal, by the way, when we get to that. Smooth transition from previous superintendent, from Dr. Rosenberg to, uh, the superintendent-elect. And, and I say that, that, uh, and I was appreciative that they said that, because that would be part of my, your responsibility to, to direct me, and you won't have to, I will, but when you elect a superintendent at some point, when you decide to do that, uh, part of my responsibility will be able to help them make their transition into this position as seamless as possible, working through you as my boss. Uh, and then, be a good listener and understand, expect the chain of command to be followed, uh, decision-maker, unite us and value us, respect and appreciate all positions and staff members, and hold everyone accountable. So, if any of you think of any that you might want to add to that, uh, board members specifically, please feel free to share with me at any point in time, and I certainly will put it on this list. Now, the next item, and you have it in your package, you have all of the goals of our leadership team. Uh, and that, uh, is, is their goals, this is not going to be posted up here, I'm just going to go over the governance and administrative services. But my charge to our leadership team, both the P D E, which is by statute, but our leadership team as well, to have one professional goal and one personal goal. Some had more than that, and that's, that's perfectly okay. But with that said, I'll go through these very quickly. Monitor school operations and adjust as necessary throughout the 2021 academic school year. That is number one, and has to be, just by the nature of where we are right now with everything that's going on with COVID. This is also Mr. McCall's, and I took it from him to put it as mine as well. My goals are meshed with everyone's. My, whatever these principals on their P D E, their goals are, they actually will become my goal. Number two, uh, Anderson School District Two strategic plan renewal, we had the process of that, the 2025. We have actually completed, I say we, but I was not here. But last year, we were able to get the mission, vision, and core beliefs taken care of as a committee. Uh, and then, we kind of got into a stall mode, and so, we, we don't have it completed, but actually, after talking with the good folks in Columbia, they said we were in pretty good shape. Unless we were making a major change, all we had to do was update our data, and then, we'll be bringing to you for your blessing. So, that hopefully be sooner rather than later, because when I first saw this, I went into a little bit of a panicked mode, because I wasn't sure where I was going to start. And then, when I got, uh, talked with some folks, I was reassured that we were, we were in pretty good shape. Update the Anderson School District Two organizational chart. Uh, that, that needs to be updated based on what we have right now. And then, administrative job responsibilities assessment and alignment. I've asked all of our district administrators to share with me not only their job responsibilities, but what responsibilities do they have that they feel like maybe should be in another area? Not that they're trying to push something off, or, or is there something that, say, is another area they would like to have in their area? And then, we're going to compile all that, and that, the goal for that, we determined today in our administrative meeting, is to begin the, the adjustment for the 2122 school year, which will be actually for the, uh, superintendent-elect. Implement a public information system, as I mentioned earlier, to do a, a good job of being sure that we get the many good things that go on in this school system. And I won't just go in and stop right here and say it, I was going to say it at some point later on. This is a good school system. I'm telling you, I'm, I'm, I know you're saying, we know that already, but I knew, and I didn't know that. It is a good school system. It is a quality school system, and it has quality leaders, it has quality people all the way through it, and we're going to. And we're gonna get all through this together, and we're gonna ultimately, at the appropriate time, you will be bringing in a superintendent, and this school system is gonna be moving forward just like it always has. And I mean that sincerely, I'm not just saying it, I mean that very sincerely. And then assess and evaluate the district's financial status, procedures, and alignment. Ms. Pardell and I've had some pretty lengthy conversation with that. What we really wanna do is really look at our financial impact and review where we are. Because in some instances, we are spending more than we're taking in, and we want to be sure that, and you've done a great job with it. She's done a great job with it, the past administration did a great job with it. But what we gotta do, we gotta be sure that we put a plan in place sooner rather than later so that when we get to our budget for next year, that we can have a plan in place with some strategies that we can bring to you, to inform you, so that you may be able to make informed decisions on what we need to do financially. So, and then research virtual learning, curriculum and instruction. We've got virtual learning right now, this is just one person's opinion. I think probably overall that virtual learning will be here to stay even when the coronavirus is over. I think that parents and the communities have really, many have bought into it, and it has a lot of possibilities, and I think, and that has to be approved by the board, by the way. But if, I'm afraid that if we don't do that, if we don't implement a program or look at it very seriously, I'm afraid we potentially could start losing some students. And we don't want that to happen, we want them to have that as a part of our curriculum and instruction. Now, the last, the next two looking forward, HIJK. Let me say this right up front, I'm not trying to get in your business. No, I don't mean that at all. But I put this down because recognition of board trustees. We know we'll have one board member that's going off this year, and be sure that we recognize them, you know that, we will. But also, we have, we will be going through this election where we will be electing offices, and then by statutes, you have orientation of newly elected board members. We know we'll have one new board member. So part, most of the time, as the secretary to the board, the board expects me to ensure that that information gets to the board members. And I think our state does a good job of sending the two board members anyway, but it still falls on the superintendent. Under I, board of trustees, team building training. Now, this is just my opinion. It's my, I think that whenever you have a change in board, and what, and what we've gone through as a school district and board of trustees, I would recommend to the board, and this is your decision, not mine, but I would recommend that we consider a, once we get a new board seated, that at some point during that time, that we have a board, a team building type situation where we can bring someone in or whatever, just to, just to start from where we are, looking at next year and the years ahead with the new member, new board member or new board members, if you will. And again, that's your call, but that's just my thought. And then lastly, board of trustees process for selection permanent superintendent of the next to last. That typically is done in the springtime, that'd be entirely up to you, and if you use an outside entity to do the search, whatever you may do there. But part of the superintendent's responsibility is interim, is to ensure that that process, once it's completed, is able to do what's the next number K? Transition plan for superintendent-elect, to ensure with your permission that I do everything that I possibly can to be able to get them in, to be able to give them, turn everything over to them so they can see and have any questions answered, whatever it may be, so that when, if I leave on, technically by the agreement at this point, I would leave on June the 30th, they're able to step in and be able to come early enough that they'll be able to spend time with you and do whatever they need to do to make that transition, or he or she as smooth as possible with the support of the superintendent, the interim superintendent. And then the last one there is implement, plan, schedule for HVAC and roofing. That has come from finance as well as maintenance. And then the last thing that I would just simply say is that, as I mentioned last month's meeting, I would say to the trustees individually or collectively that if you see that there needs to be a goal that the interim superintendent needs to focus on, that's not on here, I certainly welcome that from you, and would hope that we would get consensus from all the boards to say, all the board members to say, yes, we want you to look at this and put this as part of your plan. You don't have to do that tonight, if something comes up, just let me know, and I can share with you, and we can go from there. Because there's some things that I'm sure you know that I have no way of knowing. And that is all that I have, unless there are any questions.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I really appreciate the work that you did on all this, and I think it's a job well done. I did enjoy reading the goals for the different departments in the district. I did have a question underneath special, special services goals. And I'm thrilled that Ms. Hopkins is a part of the district team leading SPED, the SPED program. I think she'll do a marvelous job. But her third bullet talked about teacher supports for SPED teachers, and she talked about the many things that she is going to be doing to help first-year SPED teachers in our district this year. The monthly seminars and surveys and completing observations and feedback given to the teachers. I was just wondering, and Mr. McCall, this might be just a question for you. How many new persons are teaching in SPED in our district this year? I mean, I know we've had several in special education to resign. So I guess my question's twofold. How many first-year teachers do we have in SPED, and how many new teachers to the SPED department?
We have three first-year teachers in the SPED, and then we've got one more that is new to the district. So a total of four new to the district, three first-year teachers.
Okay, okay. Well, then my comment to that is because SPED is, is kind of real, well, all teaching positions are complicated and demanding. But because of the IP's and all the support services that must be given to special ed teachers, I appreciate the fact that Ms. Hopkins is going to invest, invest some time working with those teachers, the first-year teachers. The other question that I had is on the next page, under, the next bullet with SPED. And she talks about reducing the number of non-compliant IP's. Did we have a lot of non-compliant IP's this past year, or have you noticed?
I'm not sure. I know that that has always been an issue as far as making sure the wording is exactly right for it to reach the, being in compliance. And so I know that Lindsay before Tiffany, she worked real hard in doing that as well, and so.
And this is not to minimize the fact that Ms. Stewart.
Oh, absolutely not, yeah.
I guess that kind of, because I work with Anderson University in the SPED department, I guess that kind of caught my focus, and I just was wondering if.
I just think it's a key every year with SPED to make sure that everything's in compliance. Because I know even when Ms. Stewart was here, that she was a focus of hers as well, and made sure that they were all in compliance by the end of the year.
Okay, and that's all the questions.
It's always a challenge.
Back to the first-year teachers and especially, is that relevant to each one of those schools?
Yes, 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 there are.
Good question.
Absolutely.
I've been to them. I was doing that, I remember even as a former principal, I remember with SPED teachers, we were always so concerned about being sure that we did everything exactly the way it was supposed to be done. We did from the heart, but sometimes you could make mistakes, but we want to be sure that every aisle was dotted, every team was crossed.
Now, Mr. Sausen at Honey Path Elementary's got the most, he's got two brand-new SPED teachers. But of course, he's got a lot of SPED teachers down there to help him with those. But the, I, and I would just be honest, all our new teachers are doing a fabulous job.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if there are any further questions, like I said, if y'all feel the need to share anything that you'd like for me to add along the way, please don't hesitate to let me know because your background is far extends mine. Thank you, Madam Chair, members.
Thank you. Any more questions on y'all? Um, I'm undecided on the agenda, is the certification of the 2020 deal with Sam and my guys? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Board members were in need, thank God it was his local, not their display.
Okay, that will be Mr. Charles, they'll be presented.
I'm gonna quickly give you a packet of materials that I'm gonna refer to from time to time.
Is the, what you just gave me is, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, that's all.
Or there should be four documents. Let me, first of all, we all have to pour through all these pages. I just, I thought, since I was giving you a statute, I'd give you the entire statute. There's a lot of misunderstanding in South Carolina about the creation of school districts. Most people think of the Greenville County School District, or the Lawrence School District, or Anderson School District One, Two, or what have you. And they think they're part of the county government. But the Constitution of South Carolina addresses education. It basically says the General Assembly is responsible for providing a free public education. So school districts are what we refer to as political subdivisions of the state. And so, for example, this first document that I gave you in your packet that has 1982 up at the top, is the local law that was passed by the legislature in South Carolina, 1982, that as the title says, to provide for boards of trustees of the school districts of Anderson County and to repeal some other acts. But this, now, interestingly, when this came up in the legislature, the only people who really had an interest in it, or in many instances voted on it, would be your Anderson delegation. That would be true in the House and the Senate. So without going through this whole thing, the specific issue that I've been asked to focus on tonight is when trustees are installed. And you'll notice on the second page, I put a little bracket around Section Five, because that's the key section in the original law. And it, you know, it says, "The terms of office of school trustees shall expire on December 31st following the election of their successors in the general election." All trustees are appointed for a four-year term, and then it deals with vacancy. Now, the second document that I gave you at the top, it says 1983 amendment. This very simple paragraph there, Section One, amended part of the general law that was passed in 82. And it's interesting, the Attorney General emphasizes this amendment because it shows the intention of the delegation. "In the case of a vacancy on the board of trustees, such vacancy must be filled by appointment of the county board." We all know that. "Until a successor is elected in the next general election to take office on January the first following the election." Now, interestingly, this became quite a, and I'll talk about this in some executive session, but this became quite an issue in the month of June because we had a vacancy on our board, and there were people who applied to the county board for the vacancy. There are a number of them, the county board conducted interviews, and there was question, the question came up of what term, what was their term going to be? And this amendment, you can see that the clear intent of the legislature is for new trustees to be sworn in after, or January 1st, or after the 31st of December. Now, the third document I gave you is a recent opinion of the South Carolina Attorney General that is directed to Mr. Thompson, who is the attorney, as you know, from the County Board of Education. And I, we don't have to read through all this, I just highlighted some of the key provisions. And to say, this is a very recent opinion, in June of 2020. And the conclusion, it's this office's opinion that a court would hold a vacancy on one of the boards of trustees in Anderson is initially filled by appointment of the county board, and such appointment only serves until a successor takes office on January 1st following the next election. So the Attorney General, and generally what happens now, but the next piece of paper, I think it's in your packet, it's just one page, is the state law. And the state law is, the number of the state law is 5919 through 15, and it's just one sentence. But this is what has created the problem, and it's somewhat of a strong sentence in a way. It says, "The term of office for every elected trustee of the school district must commence one week following the certification of the election." All right? What, what happens here, what the Attorney General has said, is that if you have a general state law, as this is, but you have a special law that is directed to a particular district or county, the specialized law prevails. That was his conclusion. And you may think, well, what's the problem? Well, the problem is that this district and every other district in Anderson County has a policy that provides that the trustees are to be sworn in one week after the election. And I'll just quickly, if you could just pass these around, I think this is the, both policies. And the issue here then, and I wrote a letter yesterday to Mr. Thompson. We missed connections today, but his response to me was very interesting. I sent him these documents that you have, of course, obviously, he was familiar with them. Because in his letter to the Attorney General in June of this summer, he refers to two statutes, and then the Attorney General's letter was directed to Mr. Thompson. And I didn't, for whatever reason, I didn't know about it until just recently. But at any rate, the, every district in Anderson County has a policy that says trustees are sworn in within one week after the election. But we got a definite opinion from the county board and the Attorney General in Mr. Nichols' case, and his term would, he would serve through December the 31st. So what I said, you know, it's odd, there's no question about that. The Attorney General and the statute clearly say that he serves until December the 31st, until whoever wins that election, he or someone else would be seated. Now, I sent this to Mr. Thompson today, and I had to smile when I got his email response. He said, "Please tell me why you think the county board should deal with this rather than the individual districts." Well, that's a fair question. I mean, the county board didn't adopt the policies, you did. And they were prepared by the South Carolina School Boards Association, and their attorneys probably were looking at this state law. It's very simple and straightforward, and they didn't look at these statutes that pertain just to Anderson County. So, and also, Mr. Thompson's secretary told me a second interesting thing today. She said, "When he got your letter, the first thing he told me to do was to send it to Joey Nimmer, or the officials at the county board." And even though Thompson asked the question, "Why is this a county board problem?" I can see where they could say, well, we didn't have anything to do with the adoption of these individual policies. So, you know, this is the first opportunity that we've had to discuss this matter, you know, in a board meeting. I'm sure you were aware of the issues that came up when Mr. Nichols was appointed. And the county board, you know, clearly thinks that his appointment runs through the end of December. Now, and that's in effect been said. Fortunately, we have some, I don't know how big of an issue you think this is, it's not just a legal issue, it's a public relations issue. Because the press and people are gonna ask, well, you know, how can all five of the districts be, you know, following the wrong law? And the, what we can do is, we have a month, we, to think about this and see what the other districts are gonna do. I assume that Mr. Nimmer will be talking to, to all the other districts and see what their, what their concern is, and probably their attorneys. And if we need to change our policy, we can easily do so in October. We've got a month to, to think about this. So, having said that, I, I mean, I'm, I'm interested in what, you know, how, how important you perceive this issue to be. You know, it's, we've, obviously, we've got an election in November, and both of the policies in this district, and that's what, I talked to Mr. Chapman, that's what they did when he was superintendent, and apparently it was then changed to do it one week after the November election. So, I'm just curious what, what, what your perception of importance of all this is.
I guess I would just like to ask a question. Which law supersedes, I mean, is the state law the superseding, or is the local legislation the superseding, or which is what we are supposed to be doing?
The Attorney General partially addresses that question in his opinion. Basically, the conventional wisdom is that if you have a general law passed by the legislature, which is fifty-nine nineteen is, but then you have a specific law passed by the legislature dealing with the Anderson County school districts, it's the specific law that supersedes the general law. And sometimes it has to do with when they were passed and that kind of thing. Your, your, your policy that I gave you a copy of, BBB and BBE or whatever, both contemplate, you know, they provide that the trustees will be sworn in in November following the election. And that's contrary to what the, you know, it certainly would be an odd situation to say that Mr. Nichols would be sworn in in January and everybody else would be sworn in in November. I mean, that, that would be a peculiar result. So, I think that we, you know, we don't have to resolve it now by any means, but we certainly, if we're gonna change the policy, we need to change it in an orderly way by, you know, certainly mid-November, you know, mid-October.
The other question that I have is, when we dealt with this in June, and, and we dealt with this specifically regarding the length of term.
Right.
Did the state, the state law says that he, he was to go in for the remainder of, of the term? That was of the unfield, and it was the local legislation that said that he had to go until the next general election?
No, it was the first state and local law that provided that he would stay until the end of the, of the term. And probably, I don't know what happened, this was, what, thirty-five years ago?
Right.
But somebody in the, in the delegation said, "Well, you know, why should somebody appointed by the county board have a longer stay than somebody elected by the people?" So, that, they, that's why the eighty, eighty-two and eighty-three are both what we call local legislation in South Carolina. And they were only voted, that was only voted on by the Anderson County delegation. And I, I say this, I really just became aware of this last week, because, you know, obviously, previously, we were discussing it primarily in connection with one member who was coming on. Now, I, I see that, you know, the, the policies are in conflict with the law. And I don't know, you know, how Mr. Nimmer would wanna approach it, I've already told you what Mr. Thompson said. And, you know, the easiest may be just to bring this to the attention of each district and see what each district board wants to do. I don't know how many of you were aware that all trustees in Anderson County are sworn in in, in November after the general election. And that's, that's when the most recent trustees joined our board was in December. Any other questions or? I know, I know that Mr. Andrews may be thinking this is more than I bargained for. But it's, I don't think it's a complicated problem, I think it's just a matter of, of how this board wants to proceed.
May I, may I speak, Madam Chair? I took the liberty to go back to read as much as I possibly could to understand it, and let me say, I do not have a law degree. So, but I looked at our policy, obviously, and our policy, based on the election, the, the persons that are elected in this November the third election would be seated on November the ninth, which is the follow, we all know that. But then when I looked at the letter from the Attorney General, then that's, and it's already been explained there. What, what would happen is supposed to be in January, and then, of course, that the local, the specific local legislation, well, excuse me, just one minute, I just got to the, I was at the wrong spot. With this, it supersedes, supersede, supersedes the state law as it relates, so that would supersede, which would go to January. But potentially, what we could have is we, we elect our board members, and they're seated the next, the second Monday after the election. Okay? Then we elect our officers in December, that's, that's what our policy says. Now, with this comes in, we could potentially have, if Mr. Nichols were not to win his seat, we would potentially, which I, you've already figured that out, but we could have two. Mr. Nichols would, could potentially be saying, I'm not speaking for him, but I'm, I stay until January. But then Donald Andrews, I had just won the election, and, well, no, I'm, I'm supposed to go in November the ninth. And so, when I had kinda looked through this and realized everything that happened in, you know, with, with Mr. Stu Shirley, you know, and, and then realized, and I started looking at this, and I realized that whatever, we needed to really make some decisions relatively quickly, because it could get real muddy if we don't, and we need to have it before the election. Now, our board policy states on, on, on policies, we have to have two readings, with the exception, there can be emergency situations, and I don't have it right in front of me, but there can be temporary to be able to get through this. So, that's where legal counsel is saying that we've got a little bit of time. But my advice to us, and what I read, it appears to be that, in, in what I've read, just as a layperson reading it, it appears to me that by law, regardless, Mr. Nichols would be here to, I guess, January the first. If that, does that make sense? I mean, these, and I, you know, based on, there again, I'm just reading it myself and, and really kinda studying over it. So, I think we're gonna have to be sure that we get a final from the experts that can tell us what to do so that we can make our move within the next month, so that regardless of what happens, we will have a smooth transition. And transition could potentially be Mr. Nichols, but it's still a transition. And that everyone's being, everything's on the same page. And if the board wishes, we can certainly look at our policy to get something updated sooner rather than later to bring back to you, through legal counsel, of course, or whatever, because I wouldn't wanna be writing policy. Is that fair to say? Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Next question, shouldn't this also be addressed to the county delegation? Because this is a state law that applies to Anderson County. And I can see why it's confusing, because I remember when they made the statement about Mr. Nichols serving until January. I remember when I was elected a number of years ago, I was kinda shocked how quickly the next week or so I was sworn in.
Yeah.
So, I don't even know if we have the ability as a board to change the policy, since this is a county law.
I just, no, the board has the authority to change its own policy.
Oh, okay.
There's no question about that, and that's, that's what Mr. Thompson is saying, why are you bringing this to the county board? Now, your point is a good one, if the legislature was in session, we could simply write a letter to the, to the chairman of the delegations, to Mr. Gamble, and, and say, Senator Gamble, and say, "This is a problem with the delegation queers addressing." But they're not, and they, conceivably, there could be some special session of the legislature between now and the end of December, but I'm not aware of any right now.
The policies that we generally adopt, those are policies that the School Boards Association basically publishes.
Yes.
And we purchase those policies from the school boards associations, and that we, and then we make any changes that we want to make to them. So, I'm assuming, as they write their policies, that they write their policies, because they're writing their policies for the entire state, they write those policies based on state law? And then it seems that it would be our responsibility as districts to research and know what our local law says, and then make the changes that are needed, that are required by the local legislation. Does that make sense?
Well, yes, I mean, it's, obviously, this, I keep asking, you know, how important do you see this issue as being? Now, obviously, we've gotta know what we're doing this fall. But the, and, and I also should say to you that this is not something that all attorneys agree with. I've talked to a couple of attorneys, who they argue that the state law, the general state law should be given precedence. But that's clearly not what the Attorney General has said, and, and they, they even went so far as to overrule an earlier opinion. If you'll notice this letter that was written to Mr. Thompson in June, they specifically overruled one of their opinions that said something different, although it was issued a number of years ago. So, this, again, we don't have to make any decision tonight. We have, you know, my suggestion, we either have a special meeting to deal with this, and then if there's a sentiment to change the policy, it could be done at the regular meeting, or you can do it vice versa, you could bring it up at the regular meeting and see, you know, what the sentiment is. And then, if it, if you pass a revised policy, it would have to be given a second reading, but only before November. So, that's, that's where we are, and I, I will, you know, I expect, you know, I, I will talk to Mr., you know, Thompson tomorrow, and I'll just say, I thought I needed to bring this to his attention, and I agree with him that, you know, the county doesn't want every district going in a different direction. So, I don't know what the next steps will be.
Was there any indication of why the county passed this specific rule? Because, you know, if everybody else in the state was doing it, why was Anderson County supposed to do it?
Well, please understand, when they, when this first law was passed, eighty-two, the state statute didn't exist.
Oh.
So, the, the delegate, and, and I can tell you that, for example, the Beaufort School District that I represented for years, their board members are sworn in in January, and that apparently is in the local legislation in Beaufort. And I haven't had a chance to check that many other districts to see, but, because I'm, you know, concerned primarily in Anderson too with this situation. But the state law, these two, the eighty-two and eighty-three were done before the state law. So.
Thank you. I read your questions.
I have one. I can ask you, Mr. Nichols, that you received a letter from the county board when you were chosen by the county board?
Yes.
Did it, what did that letter say?
I'll have to look and see. I, I wasn't gonna follow all this up.
Okay.
Um, I need to ask.
I just said it was a good question, I.
Um, the school, other school, of that, that city?
Yeah, it is. Let me get the computer start back here. Um, this, we've just finished our third week of school, our fourth week. I can tell you that when we started, we started our elementary, uh, students started up face to face in the very beginning, really because of the, the fact that they were able to co-work their students, and also the fact that there's less spread of the virus among children. We started our secondary, middle and high, an eight-day hybrid scheduler, they would do virtual at home for two days, and then actually come in for two days. On September the fourth, though, we decided, really looking at the numbers, and I'll, I'll kinda go over some numbers with you in just a second real quick, and the fact that we have problems with students with internet access who chose face to face, that it was best to bring our children back. We felt like, well, we had enough safety precautions in place in our schools to be able to bring them back. And it truly is a balance that we were having to face with the safety of our staff and students, and our desire to make sure our students learn the best. And so, there's a balance there among getting back to work. We do have a district safety team that meets weekly, that kind of will look at our numbers, and I'm just kinda, I wanna very briefly go over what we're looking at when I say numbers. We're looking at numbers based on the emergency management from Anderson County, based on our zip code. Okay, and so, we mainly pull from two-nine-six-five-four, two-nine-six-two-seven. Now, we do pull from two-nine-six-two-one, and they make up fifteen percent of our population in, in our schools. Two-nine-six-two-one, though, is a strange zip code, because it goes up to Anderson City. And I'm, it's our feeling that the area that we draw from would be more reflective of our Belt and Honeypot zip code. So, we are strictly looking at these two numbers from our emergency management. And you can see how our numbers have gone from the very beginning of school to, to September the fourth, okay, when we opened up face to face to where we are now. Saw a good little drop, right at the, kinda stuck, sort of in the fifties, saw a little drop right after Labor Day, but we knew that it would start going back up after Labor Day. And it has, it's, it's starting to go up a little bit. So, that's one target number that we look at. Another number that we look at when we make these decisions is, what is it doing in our schools? How is it affecting our kids and our staff? This is on our website for public display, you can go, and these are actual cases per day that's in our school system. And I just kinda summarized it. Right now, we have eight positive cases since the start of school. Three of them have been students, five of them have been staff. And you can see, last Friday, we had two staff members and a student. I will tell you, those two staff members are student teachers, they're not really staff members, they're two student teachers and a student. We have had to quarantine, and this is where we really get into getting the, the numbers kind of. We have, had to quarantine fourteen staff members and seventy-two students over the, the course of the beginning of the school year. Because you, you know, if you come in close contact with someone, you're gonna get quarantined for fourteen days. If you have COVID, you're gonna quarantine for ten days. If you live with someone who's tested positive, you're gonna quarantine up to twenty-four days. Okay? So, that's how, that's sort of what we're looking at with our numbers. And. Um, and we have about twenty-four percent of our students that are virtual learners. Um, elementary, our teachers are dedicated to teaching virtual sections or classes. They're virtual teachers. In our secondary, middle and high, um, they are both. They're streaming, uh, in most of the cases. So I could be in a class of twenty kids and have five virtual. Um, we have struggled somewhat with our virtual, just simply because of technology, um, it being new, you know, not there in the teacher at any of our schools that took a class and they came through their preparatory program of how you're going to teach virtual education. And so it, it's new. Our teachers are perfectionists, and they want every student to, to learn, and, and that's difficult in a virtual environment. So as Mr. Andrews says, he thinks it's here to stay, I'm ready for it to go away, uh, and get back there face to face. Um, and so, but our teachers are working extremely hard. All of our teachers are working extremely hard for our students, and our students, I'll be, I'll just, I'll tell you, have been wonderful. Our face to face kids have, have, the masks have not been a problem, the things that we kind of thought, well, they're gonna, they're not gonna like these shields, they may not like them, but they're doing what they're supposed to do. So all in all, we've had a great start. We've got some work to do on our virtual, uh, academy, just to kind of get that straightened out. It's not our internet, a lot of times, it's the internet that's from the whole. They're not robust enough to do the online streaming that is required. And, um, the other thing is, we'll have, you know, as, as the nine weeks comes, we'll look at numbers of bringing some people back, uh, that made virtual, we've got some requests in virtual that are wanting to come back to face to face, so we'll entertain those and see if we have room to bring those kids back.
Mr. McCall.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a call from Daniel with parents. I'm a little concerned about, uh, maybe some lack of communication between administration and nurses, because their child, their children have been out since last week doing virtual because someone in the home had been exposed and tested positive. But the parent called again today to remind that particular school, and spoke to the nurse that they would be out again this week, or, and then hopefully be turned next week. And, um, the nurse said, well, I didn't know they'd been out, nobody had let me know.
Rest assured.
And I found out that the email came from a principal, but somehow the principal and the nurse aren't always communicating back and forth, so.
You, you need to let me know, then I will handle that situation.
But it could, I just want all schools to make sure that there's, that everybody's working together.
There is, the nurses are responsible for the students, and they, they are to contact the principals, and both of them are instructed to contact me, uh, so that I have.
Does the nurse say, do I get that they're out a week, does our.
Again, let me know so I can correct that. But, uh, we have, I, there's a spreadsheet that each nurse and administrator have access to, where they put anyone who is quarantined, anyone who has tested positive, and they call me, and we call DHEC to figure out what's the length of time to get that done. I'm responsible for any staff member, and I could have the spreadsheets and the return to work letters to each, any staff member who has to be out, uh, for any amount of time. So if that's an issue, that's the first I've heard, and if you'll, if, if you'll let me know, I will correct that.
And then I have one, I'd like a breakdown of how many of the elementary and middle and secondary are doing virtual.
Yeah, and that's coming up. All right, and that's the next thing. So any other question on the reopening of school? Yes?
Just to clear something that I've heard, again, I could have misunderstood in the meeting about how we were going to do virtual, um, which I've never completely understood it. It could be just the way I heard it, but the way I pictured virtual was a teacher in a school class, or classroom by herself, teaching just computer students at home. But I've been told today that you got a teacher doing both virtual and classroom. How?
I- in the elementary. K through five, you're exactly right. They are dedicated, doing their thing, okay? They're, they've got their virtual kids of twenty-four that they're virtual teaching. In the secondary, sixth grade through twelfth grade, the majority of them are streamed through the classroom. So they may have a classroom of fifteen kids, five or six virtual, okay? So it is a mixture of that. Majority on the secondary level, though, it is streaming into the classroom.
High school.
High school, middle, sixth grade through twelfth grade, uh, Ms. Efting's up there teaching chemistry, and she's got four or five students that she's got virtual, okay?
Should have been reverse. I mean, wouldn't like it to be harder with high school students doing both.
But we don't have enough teachers that can do the virtual.
Yeah.
In the classroom, no.
And when we kind of planned it out and talked to other districts and about how they were going to do it, that's sort of how they were doing it, and so we felt like we were in pretty good shape. It's just, it's new, okay? And I, I.
That's the, that's the point I heard, that might be, I misunderstood this part, but other districts are doing it, where two, two different pictures are doing it.
Some of them are, some of them have canned curriculum, uh, that they use. Uh, we didn't want the canned, canned curriculum, name it, because it's two, two things, it's expensive, and also the fact that if you come from virtual world back to the classroom, what they're doing, the canned curriculum is, uh, is going to be entirely different from what you do in the classroom. Uh, so that's why we wanted that connection. Ideally, would it be better on the secondary that if we had a teacher that taught strictly virtual and, uh, and then a live class? It would be. It's just that personnel-wise, we didn't have the staff.
Or is that on the.
It's very difficult, that's what, uh, yeah, it's very difficult, that's why I was saying it. Our, those high school, e- even the elementary, because it's new. I mean, they're not, they're, they're not, how do you teach kids virtually? I mean, nobody trained them on that. Uh, when we've had not full-time training. I mean, they've had training on virtual, but not full-time training. So it, it's difficult. And, and, uh, for me to sit here and say it's not, I, it's not, because I, I've sat and talked with the teachers and, um, and, and listened to them, and I, so I know that it's difficult, that what we're asking them to do. And I'm hoping that over time, it gets better, uh, and hoping over time, they'll start coming back, uh, you know, so the numbers aren't quite as bad.
But if we have a virus outbreak after the holiday weekend, okay, if we have, that we do not, current, based on the list you broke down.
It could be the part that, you know, if we, I'm hoping not, I'm hoping our numbers will stay lower fifties.
I agree with that.
Uh, I'm hoping that we don't have to go back to hybrid. Hybrid was when half of them came in and half of them were gone.
That would be a risk.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, that would be different from the ones that, hey, I'm solid virtual.
Okay.
Yeah. But you're right, it's, it's difficult. I'm not going to try to sugarcoat that in any, any stretch, and I'll fight those teachers and tell you, it's, and whatever we can do to help them, we're going to do it.
Okay.
All right. The other is security enrollment, okay? And, and this is the numbers that we have. We've got thirty-four seventy-three, and you can see the number of face-to-face kids in virtual. And then below that, you'll see the percentages of kids that are by school, that are virtual. You'll notice that Belton Elementary, Belton Middle, VHP, um, are in the high twenties. Um, Honey Path Elementary, right, were not even twenty percent virtual, but we've got twenty-four percent of our kids virtual. That's large. That's a large number of group of our students that chose to go virtual. Why did they choose virtual? A lot of them, I'm afraid, chose it because they thought it was like how they're going to end the school year. Uh, as much as we told them it wasn't going to be like it, that's what they thought. And now we do have a lot of kids saying, parents saying, hey, we want to come back. Uh, and right now, with the numbers, we can't, but we're going to look at it each nine weeks about possibly bringing them back. Now, I also wanted to show you how that compared to the one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day last year, okay? One-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day, we're down one-hundred-and-seventy-five students from the one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth day, um, to where we are now. Part of that is forty of those kids are 4K kids. Uh, there's two classrooms of 4K that did not make, one in Honey Path and one in Marshall. Um, so that's, that's, um, could possibly be forty of those kids. Um, but anyway, that's the, the numbers.
What, what, how does that impact us financially? What is the student base cost for each pupil?
Um, right now, it's twenty-four eighty-nine, two thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars. Um, the, the housing attendants are coming back tomorrow and noon, so hopefully they will vote to raise that for this current school year. Um, last year when we lost about a hundred students, it cost us about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I can get the report from Amy tomorrow and plug my numbers into my spreadsheet and see about what it'll cost them.
Do we, have we looked at, um, I know last year when we looked at this, we identified specifically that we have lost kids in kindergarten and in third grade, and I think that was because of the third grade open at, at another, at another location. But I'm just wondering if we have looked at where we have lost those students, other than what you just said, the forty that was in 4K?
Yeah, and that same organization, uh, is now open for fourth grade, twelve this year, and so that could be possibly some of that sixty-seven out of Belton Elementary.
I bet that is. Yeah.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, do I need to wait? This, this will be relatively brief. I just wanted to share with the board just a little bit of an update with reference to the South Carolina High School League and the athletic and all that's going with that. Um, where, and, and most of you already know most of this, but we had, the South Carolina High School League had to get a waiver from the Department of Commerce, and we had to, uh, send the information back saying that we agreed with that, that, uh, it would limit spectator capacity at an athletic contest to fifty percent of the overall capacity or two-hundred-and-fifty persons, whichever is low. The purpose of this application was to establish a minimum set of requirements that a school will need to follow in order to exceed the current establishment by the governor's executive order. Of course, we've done that, and what I, uh, what you do have in front of you tonight, we've, we placed at your place, is the, uh, twenty-twenty fall football ticket distribution policy. You can see that, and just a quick overview, the football stadium capacity is two thousand eight hundred. Uh, nine hundred and seventy-two can be on the home side, and three hundred and fifty on the visitor's side. Then you can see how the tickets, uh, will be distributed, parent tickets will be distributed in student parking lot on Sunday afternoons from three to five P.M. Uh, parents, football players will be given the opportunity to buy four tickets, uh, and you can see as it goes on down there. Uh, then the middle school has moved, uh, the two middle schools have moved their sub-varsity football games, uh, to the high school, which would allow four more spectators because of their size. And then all tickets will be sold at the gate for sub-varsity football and volleyball matches. Now, as far as the, uh, Belton-Honey Path gym, this currently only allows sixty-six home and fifty visitors' seats in the, uh, in the gym. This means our matches are basically restricted to parents and family. And one thing, a thing that they're doing, I've been talking with Ms. Phillips today, uh, her daughter's on the, I'm not sure if it's a varsity JV, but anyway, it's, well, when they, uh, they have the JV match, as soon as it's over, they clear the gym, uh, then they wipe it all down, uh, which takes, she said probably when, by the time they did everything they needed to do, uh, because they have to let it dry to, not, not, maybe ten, fifteen minutes, then everyone could come back in. Couple of things that they're doing with the volleyball, for example, most of you that would understand the volleyball, they, they always switch benches. They don't do that, they have to stay on the same bench throughout the contest, and you only have one scores book, and that's the home book. That's just a few of the things there, so. But we're monitoring it very closely. Um, the athletic director's doing a good job. Their biggest, our biggest concern is being able to ensure that we can have this enforced, uh, throughout in the state. We're having a superintendent's, uh, virtual meeting this Thursday, uh, with the Sky, South Carolina High School League, uh, and I know that there's going to be some other issues on there, but this is going to be obviously a major topic of conversation.
Are you saying the South Carolina High School League come up with this, not our administration?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and I apologize, I shouldn't tell you that.
I mean.
But we had to get, they had to get, not we, they had to get approval through the, uh, through the, uh, uh, Department of Commerce. Yeah, and we, we're limited as to the, uh, uh, what we can, what we can do. We can't venture out very far.
Well, I'm probably asleep, four tickets, football player parents, and only two for banning cheerleaders. I mean, how, how is that fair? What's the thing in there?
Sir.
That's very discriminatory, because you have parents, there are multiple sets of parents, split homes, and they, they're going to come see their children. Uh, there might be mom and dad in one home, and, and dad and mom in another, or the man or a co, or a cheerleader. That means somebody's not going to come see their child, cheer or be in the favor of that body. That bothers me that we've made that discrimination.
Well, let me, uh, let me, let me go back and revisit that with him and see. I will discuss that with him. Uh, he and I had a meeting, the athletic director and I, Mr. LeRoy had a meeting last week, and we didn't get into these specifics, and he was going to give me a list, and I looked at that today and really just, had just gotten it today to share with y'all tonight, but I'll be more than happy to go back and express the concern expressed.
Thank you. And I can assure you, the high school league is very cautious because the executive director, uh, they told me that can be, uh, be, be very cautious of what's going on, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Next item on this, and the second final reason for the policies is, of course, A-A-A, um, and J-I-A-A-A, and policy J-I-A-A. Um, now we have ten, so it's over in due date, um, and this will be separate. And finally, is there a motion to approve these three more policies as they have been submitted separately?
Some.
Thank you, is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, all, and they will, uh, please read them. These policies are approved and read. Our next item, I'm sorry. Our next item will be the certification of delegates who are planning any, um, delegate sent, which is December the fourth. And this time, we will have one delegate and one option.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody plan, or would they like to?
Excuse me, question. You look at the, the sheet, it says, Anderson, I'm two, your district was allowed two votes. So I take that we have two delegates, and up to two alternate votes.
No.
No. All of them.
The, what, sir?
All of them.
It's an alternate. One is the, one is the primary, then there's an alternate. And before it was, you know, like Greenville, we'd get eight, you know, that large system in the state, and then the smallest, you know, there might be a discrepancy, there might be five of the largest and one. We typically get two, uh, and then an alternate. But everyone across the state, largest to the smallest, gets one, uh, delegate and one alternate.
Okay, so that's just because of COVID change?
Yes, ma'am. That's just because of COVID, that's correct.
I do have one request. Um, Dr. Barnes wanted to get to the, not go to, yeah, yes, because St. Columbus is October fifteenth.
No, 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 it is virtual.
Oh, it is virtual. So, and the cost was eight dollars, but no overtime stay or anything like that.
No hotel, no meals.
Yes, I don't think we have the board approval, we just, just, we're separating them, you know, I mean.
I don't have a problem with that.
Do we? Do y'all, any of y'all have a problem with, um, do any of them get?
I'll tell you, it gave me much greater sympathy for the parents and the students and the teachers, because I've been to one two-day conference that was about nine to four, and then nine to one the next day. Having to sit in front of that computer all day long, my back was killing me. It was horrible. I don't know how the teachers and kids are managing it. So I can see why Mr. McCall is saying, let's go back as soon as we can.
Do we, do we, have we finished with the certification form, uh, or did anybody?
Did anybody want today? Did, all right, Dr. Barnes, uh, do we email it off?
I will.
All right, given.
No, ma'am.
Excuse me, I'm using that direction. Thank you. All right, our next item is a review session. Um.
I think we should, that we did into executive session.
Can we say?
We're going to have to do in the audience, please wait in the conference room out here.
Well, actually, we were going to move up to the professional development room for our executive session. We, what? No, that's up the aisle.
I, I, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that's.
You're, you're moving to the lobby, mother? Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, there's a question for Barnes.
That's fine.
Ms. McDowell, you have the names down.